All in or Tim? All in or Tim?
It's like they might be off mute. But it's not working, so maybe you could.
I'll message them.
Test, test.
Thank you.
All right, welcome everyone. I Deputy Council President Hall called the February first Council Study Session slash Retreat to order. Due to the Governor's Proclamation twenty dash twenty eight relating to the COVID nineteen emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. There are two public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting, the first being a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make your comments after the presentations at the end of the meeting. And Council President Walsh will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed to us regarding tonight's agenda items. All right, I will now take a roll call of the council members in attendance, please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember D. Michelle.
Here.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe.
Here.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
And Council President Walsh.
Here.
And that is everyone here. The first item on our agenda today is public comment. So if you announcements on public comment, if there's anyone on the column now who would like to make public comment, but did not sign up to speak in advance, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, that means pressing star three, or if you've joined by computer or smartphone, you can look for the hand icon. This varies by device, but one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right hand corner. So I'm going to wait just a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. And with that clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated to speak, indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Deputy Council President, nobody has signed up beforehand to speak, and I do not see any virtual hands raised at the moment.
Hey, I don't either. For members of the public who are on the line, again, we have another public comment opportunity at the end of the evening, so we will keep our eye on the attendance in case any of you would like to make public comment. But again, also as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawall.gov. Council President Walsh, did we have any email comments that we needed to summarize at all for tonight?
Thank you Deputy Council President Hall, we did not receive any email comments directly on tonight's agenda items, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is ID one zero three zero Citywide Work Plan and Capital Improvement Plan Report, presented by Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator. So we'll pass it off to you Andrea.
Thank you Deputy Council President Hall, good evening everybody, I am Andrea Snyder, the Deputy City Administrator, and I will be standing in tonight for Wally, the City Administrator Wally Bobkowicz. So tonight, we wanted to present on our work plan, it's something that we've done annually and also have included quarterly reports for council. The work plan, it's important to note, is not all of the things that we do at the city, it's we have a lot of ongoing work that we accomplish on a day to day basis that is not included in this plan. This plan is really just what those special projects are, as determined by the strategic plan or other timely initiatives and opportunities we have. So tonight, even what's included in our work plan, there's a lot there, there's fifteen pages worth of things. An additional, I think almost ten pages for the CIP report, or the Capital Improvement Improvement Plan Report, so we're just really going to be trying to hit the highlights. If we're not speaking to something directly, it's not because it isn't important. Everything on this list is important, but if we talked about everything in detail, we'd be here all night, and I know that many of you have questions that you want to get to, and we certainly want to answer them, so for the sake of brevity, we'll just be trying to hit some of the highlights of things that are up and coming for council and the community's consideration. So, thank you, Jean is going to be sharing the work plan that's included in your packet. And this work plan is organized by goal areas from the strategic plans, so this year we've kind of split oversight of those goals in the strategic plan among staff and the administration. So some staff I'm going to ask and call upon to help me present the work plan this evening, and we also have the rest of the senior leadership team here to answer any specific questions you may have. So if it's okay with you Deputy Council President, I'd like to pause after each goal area for any questions that council may have on each goal area. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so with that, let's get started. First goal for us tonight is the City Leadership and Services. And again, I'm just going to be touching on a few of these. First one we wanted to talk about is the CS one A that we see in front of us. It's regarding public outreach, and we are looking at these new techniques, we're always evaluating different things, I wanted to emphasize that what's really going to help us with this goal, and thank you to council for authorizing a new hire for the communications manager, so we are underway with recruitment for that person, and once that person comes on board, we'll be able to make some good headway in looking at communications at the neighborhood level and updates to our public outreach toolkit, et cetera. The S one B is the next one, and that's working with the community to identify and remove barriers to accessing city programs and services. This is also on track and is something that we are looking to build our equity framework, and that is going to the Equity Board for their consideration in the first quarter of this year. Now we have CS one D, and again, looking at how we're accomplishing some of our equity initiatives internally, we have contracted again with Shannon Kelly Ray, who was before council last year in doing some training as well as staff, she's going to come back next year and continue with some cultural competency trainings with city staff and increase our competency there. The S two C includes evaluating conditions of city facilities. This one has some minor challenges, mostly related to the pandemic. As you know, in twenty twenty, we we made some significant changes to city facilities as a result of the pandemic, including the decision to close down City Hall Northwest. Work is ongoing there to clear out files and things like that, that's something that we'll be coming back to council with as we are better able to evaluate what our future space needs and what our future facilities needs are, so I do expect the administration to come back to you to discuss those topics later on this year. The S, the CS two D is our customer service standards, and we have had some major challenges with this. We implemented the new see click fix tool for residents to identify issues as they see going on in the city that we can help address. We're still evaluating that tool and trying to understand how to use it better, what are some of the barriers to responsiveness to residents, things like that, so as we evaluate that tool, that's going to help us develop customer service standards, and as well as the new metrics that we have developed, we'll be able to better see how we're doing and set some targets that will ensure we're providing good services to our community members. So next, I'd like to kind of skip ahead a little bit and talk about police recruiting and retention. This is a very important topic to us, and of course, work is ongoing, as you can see in the twenty twenty two budget, there was funding for a limited term position as well as another position that would help us in our recruitment and retention and retention efforts to sustain a sufficient officer force. And so work is ongoing for that, we've been doing a lot of recruitment, in fact, at the next couple of council meetings, I believe the administration is going to have more specific updates on how our recruitment efforts are going. And in addition, just real quickly, as I know this has been a concern of our community as well, wildland fire protection and emergency services. We are working with Eastside Fire and Rescue on a wildfire prevention program, so more information on that as we develop that throughout the year with them. And finally, no small task, but very exciting for many of our residents and utility customers, is that online utility billing will finally become available in twenty twenty two, and we've had some minor challenges along the way in implementing that, but we're very excited to be able to roll out that service to our residents, we know they have been wanting that for a while. So at this time, I'd like to just pause and ask if there's any questions.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so now that we've gone through that first goal area, I see Councilmember Marts has a question, and Council President Walsh will be next.
Thank you Deputy Council President. Back on CS two D, Customer Service Standards. So we've had CRM software in place for over a year, but we don't have clear yardsticks on how that CRM software has impacted our customer service.
I, that's correct, I think it's a tool that we're still evaluating, how are we using it? Are there better ways to use it? Are we using it in the most efficient way, and are we doing that consistently across the city? So these are things that we're currently evaluating.
So it, do we have a notional, you, you, you say here, following review of draft metrics, the city will finalize goals for responsiveness, do you have targets for target dates for those draft metrics and for finalizing goals?
So performance metrics is also an item that I kind of glossed over, even though that is a big item for our, that we've been working on as a city and of course in conjunction with council. And so we are looking to do an annual update in twenty twenty two, likely in late spring to provide to council, and so at that time, we'll be able to return and talk more about our customer service standards and what those targets might be.
Okay, when I see the word finalize as a verb, but it doesn't have a date associated with it, I get frustrated when it's something that's the bailiwick of the councils. Generally speaking, I think all these things that don't have dates that have indeterminate deliverables in the future should have dates if they're related to the strategic plan. I think that if it's, the, the, the deal with the strategic plan is that it's council, you know, at the council level, right? We do, we don't tell individual departments how to do their stuff, but these are these are deliverables that are associated with the council, and I would expect dates on them. Similarly, on the fire work, I say this as someone who owns almost two acres on Critical Slope. I've been talking about fire prevention for six, seven years now, since identifying the wildland and urban interface risks that we saw in Wenatchee years ago, and I've not seen very much progress on it. So that's another one where I would expect to see dates associated with it, so I guess my request for both the administration and for council leadership is to ask for and expect dates associated with all of these. I'm not, I'm not saying when those dates need to be, but if there aren't dates associated with them, they're not really being managed. Thanks. Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Marts. Council President Walsh, you're up next.
Thank you. Andrea, are you looking, and also Deputy Council President Hall, are you looking for comments on each of these items, just questions to start out, and then we can provide kind of our, okay. Then I think I will hold my thoughts as comments for later, thanks.
Okay. All right, yeah, so then just to be clear, are we taking questions through each goal area and doing comments on the end with that request for you Deputy City Administrator?
Uh, thank you, I, this is Andrea Snyder, yes, I think that would work best, I'm just thinking about the council structure with public comment. And typically, we take council questions first, and then there's an opportunity for public comment and council comment, so I don't want to get out of sync with our public comment opportunities.
Right, it does look like, it does look like for this meeting, since it was listed as a special meeting, the next public comment opportunity is until after the last agenda item at the end of the meeting. So if that's keeping us from doing comments after each goal area, I think we can provide comments after each goal area then, if that's okay with you.
That would be great, thank you very much for the clarification.
And we'll go to Councilmember Marts first, who has a process comment, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, it's unclear to me when you have informational items, when no decisions explicitly are being contemplated, whether we, exactly what the mechanism needs to be, right? Usually when we do the whole thing about questions and then public comment and then sort of comment, that's when we have actionable items, this being an informational update, it didn't seem as critical to, to follow that formal structure, but whatever, I'm fine, thanks.
Okay, and just for the council's edification, then some of the helpful feedback that the administration could be looking for is are there any particular items here on the work plan that you're going to need more than the usual amount of touches on? And for general or informational updates on any of these, what would be the best way to communicate that with you through presentations throughout the year, through memos that are attached to the packet? So I think there are some opportunities to provide some helpful feedback for the administration, but you are correct, there isn't any action being contemplated right now by the council. So I'll just open it up again for City Leadership and Services, any other questions or comments from the council, I know, yeah, Council President Walsh will come back to you and feel free to line up. Council President Walsh, go ahead.
Thanks. So looking over these items, I'm really drawn to the city facilities in CS two C, and as I go through the list later on, there's also a topic on surplusing property, and so I would like to see a deeper dive into that topic with those two items combined, and I would expect that to be not just a presentation or memo or update from staff, but a conversation study session style that we're able to go into the dive. On the other hand, IPD staffing, I think what I'm looking for there is regular, at least quarterly updates, I'm happy to hear that there's going to be updates in the next few meetings, but I don't want it to lose and lose an update cycle, even if there isn't much to be alerted about, because if process stalls, I still want to know about it. So I would hope that we would create kind of a quarterly cadence on that, so that we are getting regular either written memos or presentations, I don't have a strong preference on that as we continue to go, but I do want to make sure that they are regular updates and not just as needed, given the importance of this area. So those are my thoughts on the first section, thanks.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments in the chat now, but though I did want to echo Council President Walsh, I had circled city facilities and the discussion of future space needs as well, and written down, it would be nice to kind of have a high level update when we return to work, and then maybe a deeper conversation after you've had a chance to really scope out that work. All right, well, I think we're ready to move on to environmental stewardship then.
Great, thank you very much for those comments and questions as well. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Sustainability Manager, Stacy Van McKinstry, who will present on environmental stewardship. Stacy?
Great, thanks Andrea. Well, thank you very much for having us tonight. Under the environmental stewardship goal, there are three objectives and nine actions, and tonight we're going to be reporting on five of those actions for this work plan update. We anticipate there'll be a number of additional actions that are added throughout the year to update you on, as well as we'll probably be closing out several of the actions, because many of them we see as ongoing programs. The environmental stewardship goal crosses several departments, and reporting for this work plan was really a collaboration between Public Works, Community Planning and Development, Parks and Community Services, and Sustainability. So my colleagues are available tonight, if there's questions about any of the specific actions, we're happy to dig in deeper. I also just wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Marts' comment earlier about ensuring we have dates associated with these actions, that's something we'll work on refining for our future work plan update. So under objective one, our work is underway. This includes alignment of planning processes, codes, and policies. Our future intent is to do more of a comprehensive review with consultant support. Under objective two, we are continuing to build out our volunteer opportunities with Green Issaquah and the Forest Stewards, and this includes additional trainings for current participants as well as recruitment. We are also developing more opportunities for community outreach, education, and engagement through several items that were identified in the Climate Action Plan. This includes launching a community climate challenge, updating our climate action web pages, and waste and water outreach events. And then moving to objective three, our acquisition of strategic lands is underway, we have interdepartment collaboration happening between Public Works as well as parks in order to map lands to support acquisition goals. We do anticipate that this will be an ongoing initiative. The other action we report on is proactively acquiring lands, and this work is underway through parks. We've included some additional actions that seemed appropriate under this goal. We report on completion of the ICAP as well as highlight a few of the anticipated actions we plan for implementation in two thousand twenty two. And we also provided an update on the electric vehicle initiatives, which now we are transitioning to focusing on infrastructure as well as our own fleet. So several of the items that I touched on will likely have touchpoints with council boards and commissions throughout the year. We don't have any specific items to highlight for you tonight, but we do anticipate in our next work plan in the spring that we'll be able to identify those items as well as the timelines for when they might come to council. So that was a very brief overview, happy to take any questions, and the other programs are on the line to answer questions about specific actions.
Thank you very much Stacy. Any questions or comments from council on environmental stewardship? Sure, Councilmember Hunt, right?
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. I had a comment on the Title eighteen item, which is actually in the growth and development section, but I think it, I think the comment also relates to the code update item in the environment section, so I'll make the comment now. And that is that we're doing Title eighteen, and that is a big lift this year, and one of the main goals for that update is to bring best available science and best environmental practices up to date in that section of code. We, I, I recently let council know that there's a effort with the Wire Eight Salmon Recovery Council to reduce artificial lighting, which is known to have detrimental effects on salmon, and so that work will probably be happening over the next year. And I wanted to flag that because I think it fits well into both the Title eighteen update process as well as the code, Environmental Stewardship Code update process, and wanted to make sure that it was potentially factored into this work plan. And that has to do with the Shoreline Master Program, but it also has been education and outreach component. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President Walsh.
Thank you. I had similar thoughts on Title eighteen as it relates to the code updates that are mentioned in the first item here, but also the Climate Action Plan. And so I think you know, having time to focus on that and then getting the feedback from the boards and commissions about how we can go about that work as we're doing the review of Title eighteen is going to be really important, and so not only am I interested in following that, but I'm very interested in understanding what the community input is on those items as we're doing our review, so, thanks.
Thank you. Well, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments, I did just want to highlight in this section that I think it would be helpful for the council to get kind of an update on the carbon credit program when we get closer to budget season. And I was thinking that would probably be acceptable via a memo in our packet, but if there are council members who would prefer a presentation, I would understand too. So we have some time until then, but I just wanted to make sure that was on your radar. All right, I think that's it for environmental stewardship then.
Great, thank you. Thank you Deputy Council President Hall, and thank you Stacy. At this time, I'd like to call Minnie Dollywall, our Director of Community Planning and Development, to speak to the growth and development goal. Minnie?
Thank you Andrea, good evening council members. I'm so glad to be here to talk about the growth and development piece of this work plan, which is so important for our city, and we are doing, in the thick of, you all started mentioning some of the projects that will share some updates, but we'll take a deeper dive into those in the coming weeks as we schedule separate briefings with you. Before I get into the list and the highlights, I want to take a quick minute to, or a quick second to acknowledge, we also have Steven Padua in his new role as a long range planning manager on the call. So if you have specific questions for him, I might need to call him in as well, but he'll be leading the comprehensive plan update effort that's going to come with a periodic update, so he'll be leading the long range planning team and community planning and development. So with that, I think the highlight, without going through the list here, as you all know, is Title eighteen, and we will give you a really deep dive into that at our next meeting with you the next week, bring you up to speed on all the work that the boards and commissions have been doing on that. So that's going to be the main focus of this first objective of updating the codes. And we are, we are wrapping up the gaps analysis piece and launching into a public hearings, a series of public hearings. And, and we hope to engage with you, bring, bring forward boards and commissions recommended pieces for each of the six groups, and then your formal recommendation from Planning and Policy Commission is anticipated in September of twenty twenty two with a lot of your time commitment to finalize and look at all of that from September to December of twenty twenty two. So that's in the work plan of getting the Title eighteen in front of you for decision towards the third quarter of twenty twenty two. And I think in the first goal item over here, we discuss about engaging with two neighborhoods per year. I think this goes back to the strategic plan of having some outreach directly with the neighborhoods, given that we're undertaking our bigger, you know, update to Title eighteen and engaging at a much larger scale with the community, we will start doing this individual to neighborhood outreach and fold that into with a comprehensive plan update process. So we'll come, come to you with scoping of which neighborhood, what the game, you know, how to go about doing that, what are some policy questions we want to engage with, so we'll get into that with council in twenty twenty three. And the next objective is, you know, proactively influencing the growth targets, so we do do this monitoring on a yearly basis. It's embedded in a comprehensive plan, so we bring forth all those targets that get adopted, we did a big eight year sort of update that you all did great work on. So that's concluded, but in twenty twenty three, as we start the work on the comprehensive plan, we'll start taking a look at land use, infrastructure, school support, you know, other policy considerations that council would like us to include with this update, looking forward and planning for the next twenty years. Under the objective third, we have some work on the infrastructure planning, you know, as you all know, surface water master plan is under work. We are going to start undertaking the transit study that council approved. We are going to start undertaking the transit study that council approved the budget for, so that will inform some of this work. The 3B talks about impact fees. We will be bringing that forward. You know, the last effective date of the impact fees was January of 2020, and we are required to do that every three years. So there was some work that will occur. We'll take a look at how to coordinate that with the traffic modeling work and see if we can, you know, have one inform the other, and if we need to do an interim update until the big traffic modeling update is completed. So we'll get into the nitty gritty details of that, but that will happen beginning of 2023. The big, other big project is the, you know, the related to the housing strategy work. So we did receive $100,000 grant from Department of Commerce that we are working with Department of Commerce to finalize that scope of work, and we hope to bring back for council's acceptance towards the end of February, which will include a detailed scope of work. But the highlight of that is really looking at the adopted strategies and, and seeing what work we can do that we had already, you know, included in our work plan. We've, we've had conversations about the housing strategies, but to implement those. And one of them, for example, is, you know, removing barriers for condominium construction and really taking in understanding of the economics and what, from a policy level, we, work we need to do related to that and, and others. So the, the last item here, I think, talks about more on the permitting side. So creating flow charts, having some more clear path of how we do our permitting. So some of that work will occur as we wrap up the Title 18 work, because the processes might change with the, the Title 18 update. So we want to be effective with our time related to that. And I think that, and, and there's one about the contractor code of conduct. I think that was something that was on hold in the past. We have put it back on track. But if council has any feedback of, I think it was, some of those comments came from council in terms of, so if there's any filter you want to give us for what the community's expectations are for that work, we're happy to take any feedback on that. So again, the highlights, Title 18, Transit Study, and the Housing Action Grant work. So those top three priorities. That's it, Andrea. I'll turn it over back to you or?
I think I'll jump in. Thanks very much, Director Dollywall. Questions and comments from council? Council President Walsh?
Thanks, Deputy Council President Hall. I can prepare. I've got comments on all kinds of things. So I know I've said it many, many times, but I'm very concerned about Title 18 and the endpoint of the review. I really want to be proactive about the approach with council, the feedback that we've received from the community and the commissions. And so I would expect at least quarterly presentations on the progress, but also starting to see presentations on this is what a review process is going to look like. This is the type of feedback we're looking for from you. This is how you can best engage in this process, because I think it's going to take a lot to bring us along to the concepts of what's getting changed, what the process looks like, what it doesn't look like. And then I'm also concerned about the timing overlap with the budget season. I think, given that we're starting a two-year budget, I, I think there's going to be a lot in this budget season and trying to take on Title 18 in the September to December time period. I'm just very concerned, and so I'd like to hear from the administration on that as we get closer, what, what the plan is to weave those two big projects together. So that's my Title 18 stuff. And then the other one that I want to highlight is the GD4B on the code amendments for missing middle and other housing options. I think what I would like to see there is an update after the state legislature session ends, because I know, you know, it's my understanding there's going to be at least one or two bills that have to do with code requirement for housing. And so I'm going to want to understand what that means for us as a city. And I think pulling that together with a conversation about how we can do other things to address the missing middle would be good so that we're not trying to go down one path and then the legislature's bills pass and we're like, oh, but wait, now we have to do another direction. So I want to make sure the two of those concepts are married together in how we contemplate those ideas. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments from council? I was just going to say, since you, since we did bring up the housing strategy work plan, I guess, similar to what Council President Walsh just brought up, I just thought it would be good to kind of walk through that as, at a study session, maybe before that implementation grant comes through, just because it was adopted in 2017. So it's been a little while, so I think it would be good to revisit it at least briefly. All right. I think that's it for Growth and Development then. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments. So thank you very much, Director Dollywall, and Deputy City Administrator, back to you.
Thank you very much. So on to infrastructure. The, I think the biggest thing and the most movement we're doing this year for infrastructure, that's a special project, is really our asset management plan. And so that work is underway. We have a consultant who's helping us identify these gaps and needs. And then we will likely engage with another consultant to really build out the program with the appropriate software and the internal processes as well. So we're really beginning in that first phase of work right now, and we've seen a lot of progress on that this year. Other things I'd like to highlight are the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan. This is something that council, we discussed with you in the fall, and will be coming back to council again, again later on this year as we complete the drafting of that plan. Other things that we're doing this year as related to infrastructure, Jean, if you could kind of scroll down a little bit and on to the next page, please. Thank you. Fleet studies. So we heard one of the priorities from this council is to explore the electrification of the city fleets. That study, we will begin work on this year, as well as looking at the appropriate funding formula for fleet replacement. This is actually related to our asset management work that we're also doing this year, and specifically identifying how can we best provide for fleet in a predictable manner for our, for our city budget. And finally, under infrastructure, wanted to highlight the community broadband assessment. This is work that will be underway and taken by the executive department this year. We're looking forward to that as well. Any questions as it relates to infrastructure and the work plan?
Deputy City Administrator Snyder, I'm not seeing any. I did want to ask if, you know, when the Capital Finance Community Task Force makes their recommendations, will that show up at all in the infrastructure work plan, or is that kind of addressed elsewhere?
Well, Deputy Council President, this could be a wonderful segue, because it's actually specifically mentioned in the next item under mobility. But of course, the Capital Finance Community Task Force spans, no, no, capital, community, I'm sorry, Capital Finance Community Task Force covers many different types of infrastructure, not just mobility, but I was going to talk about it in the next item. We'll have to figure out the appropriate next steps with them, but if I may move on to the mobility section, okay. Then it was a great segue. Thank you, Deputy Council President Hall. So yes, one of the major things that we're doing is the task force. The task force should be coming to council with their recommendations sometime in March. And as I said, their recommendations are for this funding plan. It's really a long-term funding plan for more than mobility or transportation. So look forward to having the task force present their recommendations and finishing out that work with them. Then we'll have to discuss kind of what those next steps are based on their recommendations. So that is MO1C. Now on MO2A, Implement a Near-Term Action Plan to Commit Smaller, Complete Smaller Capital Improvements. So we have our long-term funding approach that we talked about before, and now we have something that's more immediate and smaller. And this really comes down to our Neighborhood Safety Program, which council provided funding for in the 2022 budget. And so this will be our first year of doing these smaller neighborhood safety-related improvements. And we are also recruiting for the position that will help manage this program and look forward to reaching out to the community later on this year and starting the implementation of that program. Next is MO3A. I'd like to move on to. Great, thank you, Jean. And that is the Transit Plan and the Transit Study. I think you've heard Director Dollywall talk about this a little bit in her presentation, but certainly that is going to be another very big item for us and help, help the city take really proactive steps in terms of planning for the future light rail station in Issaquah and making sure that we can get that station on time or earlier and working with our transit partners. Also, I want to highlight a few other items as we scroll down a little bit, which is that Metro, King County Metro Squawk Talis Community Connections Partnership. I know that this is something that council talked about a lot last year, the desire for a community shuttle. We are recruiting for a position who would help us plan for this shuttle and manage that program. So that's work that we look forward to this year. And in addition to that, we have Traffic Signal Management, which we are still in the assessment phase of taking a look at which smart technologies would be helpful at which intersections for the city, and plan to return to council with more information on that once the assessment is complete. And thanks, that is, that's all that I wanted to talk about for, or highlight for you this evening regarding mobility. Are there any questions?
I see we have at least one. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. On the Transit Plan, I'm sorry, I'm going back and forth between different documents here, MO3A. And I understand that this, you know, that we need a good transit study and a good transit plan directed at Metro and Sound Transit. But I'm also wondering if this study is going to include things that I would call soft transit, like ride shares and van fleets and transportation demand management and those kinds of items that support transit in our community. Will those be included, or will this basically be just a hard look at the systems provided by Metro and Sound Transit?
Yes, I think we, we recognize that all, we need to provide our community choices and options when it comes to transportation. So it will include some of those soft transit options, but we also really need the study to emphasize the hard transit, transit routes. Certainly, first and last mile connections are going to be important in this conversation and in the study. But the idea is that this transit plan is going to help us really prepare for the light rail station and all the service changes that are going to come with that.
All right, thank you.
Good question. Moving on to a comment from Council President Walsh.
Thank you. This is Council President Walsh. So on MO1C, you know, for me regarding the Capital Finance Community Task Force, I'll be honest and say I haven't really followed the process closely, and so I feel rather in the dark without kind of updates about the next steps or the timelines. But what I hope to see out of it is a really good summary of the conversations and the direction from those meetings, similar to what we saw with Megan Curtis Murphy and her updates out of the Climate Action Plan. Those helped me come from those meetings and really feel like I got a clear understanding of what was coming out of that. And I think that's going to be important to convey that type of information in a way that can be digested. So that's my thoughts there.
All right. I did not have any additional questions or comments on this section, so last call for mobility. Councilmember Hunt, go ahead.
Thanks. I have a comment on the Community Connections Project. I know that the timeline has changed multiple times for this project. So I think for the purposes of the work plan to stay on track, I know it's on track with the current timeline, but I'm also looking at a timeline from a 2018 council packet that was different. So this project has been of interest to community members in these neighborhoods that don't have much access to transit and are, are also, it would be difficult to walk down to the Transit Center because of the steep slope. So I, I think it would be helpful to, to note for some of these projects, if they're on track, when, when the, when the schedule changes. Because I understand that the schedule can change due to various factors, but especially since that's what we're, we're using this document to sort of track the progress on it. That would be helpful in the future. Thank you.
Good point. Follow-up question from Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. That, that question sort of triggered a question that I had too about the Talis and Squawk Mountain Community Connections. You know, I'm a little, I was concerned about there not being connections on the valley floor. And it looks as though in early 2023 that we are going to be getting routes that will provide that connection from the highlands onto the valley floor. And then that would go fit very, very nicely with these community connection, connections coming from Talis and Squawk. And so it feels like we're working our way toward a network here that's, that could be very, very helpful to the citizens of Issaquah. So, but Councilmember Hunt's question did kind of trigger my concern. Is this all going to fall into line in that first quarter 2023? Do we think that that will be achievable, or is there going to be a gap between the introduction of the metro service and then the introduction of these community, community connections?
The administration's plan is to work with Metro and come up with a shuttle plan by the end of this year so that we can implement it in the beginning of next year. So that's, that's what our plan is. Of course, we do rely on our partners to cooperate with our timelines, but we've talked to Metro and we're coordinating with them on this level. So that is our plan, Councilmember DeMichele. Thank you.
That is wonderful news. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about mobility? One one's going twice. All right. I think we're ready to move on to social and economic vitality.
Great, thank you very much. Last but not least, social and economic vitality. The first thing that I wanted to talk to you about today is actually SE2A. So if we could go to the next page, please, Jean. And SE2A is about that Housing Strategy Work Plan. I know that Minnie already touched on this, or I'm sorry, Director Dollywall already touched on this this evening. But more progress continues. As you can see, we do anticipate additional implementation occurring with the Title 18 update. Director Dollywall also talked about the grant that they hope to get buttoned up soon and begin work on that. And also, components of the Housing Strategy 9 have been included in the Draft Human Services Strategic Plan, which is also which is also up for your consideration in the next month or so. So that is some progress on the Housing Strategy Work Plan, but I certainly heard your comments, Deputy Council President Hall, and wanting more of a cohesive update on the whole Housing Strategy Work Plan. Then the next item that I wanted to highlight for you is the Transit Oriented Development and Opportunity Center Project, or affectionately known as TODOC. Of course, this project has seen some major challenges as well. We are still in a purchase and sale agreement negotiations, the developer and the property owner, and we expect those negotiations to be concluded soon, certainly by the end of the first quarter. And look forward to returning to council and the community for an update on that project. We also have the Community Equity and Diversity Initiative. We're making progress on several of those. One I'd like to highlight is work that the environmental, I'm sorry, the Equity Board is doing. And that is this Equity Gap Analysis. And so in addition to some of the work on the equity framework that the city will be using, and I think I've already talked about the cultural competency training for staff as well. So a bunch of things that we're doing there that we wanted to highlight for you. Also, within this goal, the Economic Development Plan is looking for an update. So the Economic Vitality Commission and other community leaders are going to review a SWOT analysis. And this will lead to the Economic Development Plan update. More work will be occurring, I think, in 2023. Then we also have the Wayfinding Plan. So design, we anticipate, will be finalized in 2022 with some additional community outreach. This has been a long-going work plan item for the city, and we will begin implementation of the Wayfinding Plan also this year. Any questions on the social and economic vitality?
Council President Walsh.
Thank you. You know, I think on the topic of homelessness, we've started to receive lots more comments. There's obviously an increasing number of unhoused population out there. But we've also increased our focus and our staff here. And so I think receiving regular quarterly updates on our progress, the results of those would, you know, increase the information that we have about this project, which I think is going to be important before this upcoming budget season, as well as just highlighting the great work that we're doing and being able to identify any gaps in those services as we hear about it. So that would be great.
Thank you very much. Just to echo Council President Walsh, this is Deputy Council President Hall. I was going to say the same thing. Regular updates on homelessness would be a very useful endeavor for the council, but also for the community listening in, since it is such an emerging and immediate issue. And I think it would be to benefit of the council and the community also to have a better understanding. I think quarterly is a good suggestion, Council President Walsh, of what the regional homelessness authority is doing as well and where that overlaps with what we're doing. And so kind of getting the lay of the land at least a couple of times a year would be very helpful. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Council President Walsh, go ahead.
Thanks. So I know we're doing a review of the work plan. Are we also going to go through the capital projects as well? Or are you just open to general questions about that?
We have not typically gone through that item in the past in detail. So I am open to other questions if council would like us to review that in more detail. I'm certainly happy to go over those items. Otherwise, I welcome any questions or comments you have.
All right then. Next up is Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I had some comments on earlier items. So one is on the City Leadership and Services regarding conducting a review of the Police Accountability, Equity and Human Services Action Plan. We, as part of that plan, part of that plan was to have monthly reports on crime and police activity. And the latest one of those reports on the website is August 2021. I understand that the city is working on making a more accessible version of those reports, so it's easier to use, which I think would be very helpful. I also know that and have used the dashboard version of that, so their data is there. It really is a question, I think, of making it useful for community members. And seeing as we've had a lot of concern lately, we've received emails as well as public comments. And we've also adopted some new public safety ordinances, ordinances that affect public safety. I think it would be really helpful to have that information in a way that's accessible both to council for our, for our youth and for our tracking of progress in this area, as well as for the community to have that data to put, to put trends in context. I wanted to make that comment. That item is marked as on track, but I, I do think that that data and interpretation of the data component is really important. And then one other miscellaneous comment on the work plan is there's an item for evaluation of boards and commissions. I think this one is also important. We've added a couple commissions fairly recently, and these are really valuable experiences for the commissioners. So want to make sure that they are, that those commission experiences continue to be meaningful and that they're doing meaningful, valuable work. So I appreciate that that item is on the work plan for this year. And then lastly, on the capital projects list, I wanted to just mention Hillside Park. This is one that has been on the work plan for a long time, many challenges. And it is, I think, a really important project, so I'll continue to track that one. But it's been a long way coming, and it's a park that would be accessible for a neighborhood that really doesn't have that kind of infrastructure for kids. So it would be. So it's a really important project and just want to make sure that it doesn't slip. Thanks.
Councilmember Mars, you're next.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Well, of course, Councilmember Hunt's comments about Hillside Park warm my heart. And we, it's unclear to me in this status. There are milestones associated with the wetland status of the park. The big issue has been, of course, that the park turns out to have wetland issues that are not trivial, and so it's taken longer to resolve Hillside Park. And I'm not sure that the status that you received really fully gives an idea of when that's going to get resolved. You know, I'm totally understanding of the fact that we're, you know, COVID has slowed down our ability to do a lot of strategic work, but I think it would be good to understand. That segues back to my broader question, or I should say broader comment about the work plan, which is if these really, if this really is the city's strategic plan, and this is really the city work plan, I think we need more project management rigor. I think when we say something is on track or not on track, that has to always be referenced back to major milestones with projected dates on them. And some of these work plan items seem to have a decent amount of milestone information and milestone dates, and then others don't at all. So I think that should be our expectation collectively, not just a council expectation, but this is all of our strategic plan. And, you know, it's different. In years past, council would come up with things at a retreat and various council members would have their, you know, pet issues. And, you know, that's not what the strategic plan and the city work plan is. These are things that our whole community and our whole organization think are important, and they deserve project management rigor. Thank you.
And Council President Walsh.
Thank you. So I just had a few kind of comments that didn't fit into other areas. So first, I wanted to second what Councilmember Hunt said about the boards and commissions portfolio and just highlight that I think there's an outstanding conversation about how to create better two-way communication between the boards and commissions and council. And so I think combining those two topics on how do we effectively engage the board and commission members and how do we give and receive information to and from them would be a great conversation for a study session, not just a presentation or memo. And then my next one is kind of a question, which is when would be an appropriate time to really have a conversation about our pavement management policy? I know what's on our capital work plan for the year is what we budgeted in the last budget. But looking ahead to the future budget and kind of how some of our pavement and repavement and patching issues happened this year, I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to have a policy conversation separate from the budget cycle related to, you know, what are our expectations? And what are community expectations around pavement management, how often we should be repaving versus patching? I've certainly heard more community conversation about this and the results of this last year's paving session. So I would just bring that up as a potential proposal, and I would ask the administration that if that is not on the administration's kind of work plan with council this year ahead of budget session, please let me know, and I will utilize that new council proposal system, because this is something that's really important to me. And then two other items. First, given the potential of this two-year budget cycle, I'm going to want some early parameters on what the impacts and effects in the process is going to be, how it looks different from a one-year cycle, and how we should set our expectations for that budget cycle. And then I will also second what Councilmember Mart said about the rigor of the information presented in the report. I've emailed the administration, but I also just wanted to say that I reviewed what other cities provide to their councils. And while ours is, is up there, it's, it has some stuff on it. I did want to highlight what Mercer Island provides, because I think the way that they present the information on progress and status updates, on start and end dates, and just the simplified nature of the information gives a very clear understanding of if we're on track, you know, all of that. But it doesn't highlight some of the challenges, which I do appreciate in our report as well. So just wanted to highlight a few of those items. Thanks.
Great. All right. Any other questions or comments to add? Otherwise, I think that wraps it up. Deputy City Administrator Snyder, to the extent that you were looking for feedback, did the council provide the feedback that you needed?
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate that. There's a number of items that I heard as comments and not as questions. And so if there are, we do have many staff on hand tonight, so if you do have specific questions, now is a really good time to ask some of the specific questions. Otherwise, we can return and update you on some of the things. I heard a lot of comments and desires for future updates, which has been helpful, and the format of those updates. And so thank you for that. We will follow up on all of those things. I've been taking lots of notes, so appreciate that. But again, if there's any questions that you really want to have answered tonight, we do have a number of staff on hand to do that.
All right. And before we move on, then, I see Council President Walsh slid in there one more time with a question. Go ahead.
Yeah, so just to kind of go back to the questions that we had preparing for the retreat, I kind of wanted to pose to the council. I know one of the things the administration wants to know is if you're best served by written memos or presentations for some of the regular check-in updates. So that would be things like if we're given a quarterly report on major projects in the city or a quarterly report on our financial status, things like that, that are kind of regular updates. I know going back two years, those were often presentations, and then they transitioned to written memos in order to increase our efficiency. I want to quiz this council on how do you prefer to receive that information?
Councilmember Mart.
Sorry about that. I had a little problem with my computer. It comes back to what level of response are you looking for, right? At one end of the spectrum, we have checks, right? So we go through the checks, and we're looking to see if there's anything wacky in there, right? And the administration is only, you know, stuff only gets mentioned if there's, you know, educational questions or potentially something wacky, but that's not a, that's not a council-wide thing, right? So not a lot of supplemental material. You know, in olden times, we would take a bill and we would, or an agenda bill, and we would go through it line by line. We don't generally do that kind of review currently. You know, the expectation that if I receive a 500-page packet on a Friday, I hope I'm not giving anything by saying, giving away by saying that I have, I don't necessarily read a 500-page packet to cover to cover between Friday and Monday. I think there's an expectation that council provides strategic feedback and generally line by line only on the, on the core of the AB itself and not on supplemental material. So again, it all comes back to what level of feedback does the administration want? The level of engagement with council should go up as the level of feedback expected goes up, right? And when there's substantial community engagement on things like transportation issues, you know, in olden times, we'd get road cross-sections, right? And we'd show the size of sidewalks and show the sides of, of, you know, street buffers and show the sides of, you know, center buffers and all that kind of stuff. And we don't generally get presentations, or have not since COVID started, presentations with that kind of level of technical specificity. But again, the bigger the question and the more strategic the input the administration would like, the more expectation there should be for presentation. And I'll just add that I personally, everybody learns differently, but I learn best by asking questions. So I like to ask questions. And one of the things that's been useful for me is sometimes if there's a technical material that's coming through, having staff offer to do one-on-one answers, Q and A sessions has been helpful for me, so I can get all my nerdy engineer questions answered off camera. They're not necessarily policy questions. They're just nerdy engineer questions. So some combination of presentations can answer it to the level of feedback wanted, and then the opportunity for council members to get wonky questions answered off camera. Thank you.
Well put. All right. Councilmember Hunt.
Thanks. I, I agree. I think for decisions, the more complicated decisions, we need more information to make those decisions and to have those deliberations. So I basically agree therefore with Councilmember Mart. I wanted to add that for items that, or for things that we know the community is particularly interested in, we have community survey data showing that people use the website and other, and other things other than our council meetings. And so I, I've brought this up before, but we should use that community survey data to make sure that people, that we put information that we know people want in a place where they will access it. to make sure that people, that we put information that we know people want in a place where they will access it. And I think generally speaking, informational items that council isn't making decisions on, that the community is interested in, should, we should use the community survey and use the website, social media, et cetera. Thanks.
Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. I also agree with Councilmember Mart's, and I was going to answer, it depends. So just as an example, I have a very high interest in this, the Arts District that we have authorized in the city. And I'd really like to have a report on that. It would be perfectly fine with me if that was a written report. It would be perfectly fine with me if a better report would be prepared a couple of months from now and then sent to us. And so that's a case where I think a written report would be just great. If we're being asked to provide, as Councilmember Mart said, if we're being asked to to provide a high-level strategic input, then I think that that should be designated for us, or we'll probably understand when that's the case, just by the enormity of the project or the impact in our community. So it depends. It depends. If it's a high-level strategic discussion, we're going to want to spend more time on it and do that at the council. But if it's something like telling us how the Creative Art District is coming along, I think a written report is just fine.
Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Hall. Couple of thoughts. First is, generally speaking, for informational-only updates, I prefer that we receive them in writing. I also concur with Councilmember Hunt that the public was pretty clear that there are very few people who get their information about the city from watching our meetings. So if we're doing informational items to reach the public, this is probably not the best or a very effective forum at all. So I I think that that's not a valid reason for doing informational updates at council meetings. I was kind of contemplating the idea of doing informational updates similar to the way we deal with the consent calendar, which is you put the informational updates and the written report of the consent calendar. If somebody is inclined or wants to go into more detail, they can they can bring it down and we can deal with it, have a more interactive session. And I think there's a difference between informational item, as Councilde Michelle just highlighted, and something that's pending action, something that's pending action where the state or the city is looking for direction, we definitely want to have an opportunity to have a presentation and provide direct feedback to help guide that decision-making. So I think first question is, is it only informational or is it going to be directional? If it's only informational, go with a written report.
And Councilmember Joe.
Good evening, Councilmember Joe here. I would agree with Councilmember Ray that it is helpful to have the informational items more often than not in writing and then on the consent agenda. So council members can look at the consent agenda, see if there's a topic that they're interested interested in, whether it's ADA improvements or the art district, and then they can either pull it down or ask the questions of the administration as they need to, to get the information that they they want to make sure they're up to date with the project. But I'd also just throw out the suggestion that Deputy Councilmember Hall, Council President Walsh, you you kind of are our eyes and ears in a lot of ways for the projects that are coming as you discuss the agendas with the with the with the the staff. And so as you have those discussions with the administration, you'll kind of get a sense in your meetings, you know, hey, there's some spidey sense things going on here that are a little more intense than our normal conversation about just checking the box about what's going to be coming up on the agenda, you know, next Monday or Tuesday. And so you'll have a little bit more of an idea of which way that item should be kind of placed on the agenda, whether it would be a consent agenda item, or maybe it should come down for at least some discussion, if not a formal presentation. But, you know, we want to try to keep the staff away from having to to go to the night means if we can, their time is very valuable. And sometimes it's just a discussion and question we might have with Andrea or or Wally, and it can be answered, you know, just in a in a public forum, but but quickly without too much, too much fanfare, so to speak. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you very much. And I've took down a note for Council President Walsh and I to use our spidey sense. So be sure to do that. All right. I've definitely not heard anything that I disagree with. I think we're, I think we're pretty much in in alignment here on how we'd like informational items presented to us. Any other questions? Since Deputy City Administrator Snyder did did mention that we do have a great collection of public servants at this meeting tonight, do we have any additional questions about anything in the work plan? If not, we will move on to our next item.
Thank you, council, and also thank you to the staff who've stayed on with us tonight. Appreciate it.
All right. With that, our next item on the agenda is ID 1001, Open Public Meetings Act Overview, presented by our new city attorney, Rachel Turpin. Just really quickly wanted to say, you know, since it's been a couple of years and we have a new council member and a new city attorney and, you know, keeping with our commitment as a council to good government, conducting city business in the public, Council President Walsh and I thought it would, this would be an excellent opportunity to get a refresher on OPMA, all things OPMA. So with that, I'll pass it off to City Attorney Turpin.
Thank you very much, Deputy Council President Hall. Let me get this going here. Is this shared or do I still need to share it as well?
It's not showing up yet.
Okay, no, I didn't think so. That's good. I just wanted to make sure. See where the share function is here. Okay.
All right, perfect. There it is.
Works. All right. Well, thank you for having me here this evening to talk about the OPMA, one of my favorite topics because it's interesting and frustrating and just has a little bit of, little bit of gray in it, which all gives lawyers like me a little bit of something, something to use our brains on and also some job security, I suppose. Just have to leave it a little bit confusing for us all. See, I mean, here I had advanced here with the sharing. Okay. So just an overview, this is going to be a quick presentation. I wanted to leave plenty of time for questions. I also have a fairly large segment of the presentation devoted to some scenarios with examples because I think those are more helpful than me just going over dry details of of legislation that you could all read on your own. But I will touch on the basics. I'll also touch on the basics of the Open Government Trainings Act, which sets forth some requirements for open government training and records training by elected officials. We'll cover some best practices and other considerations that are kind of related to open public meetings, compliance, and then, like I said, we'll go on to examples before I take questions. So, or the basics. And I'm sure this will all be refresher, but of course, please let me know if you have any questions. The OPMA, or the Open Public Meetings Act, applies to all meetings of the governing body of a public agency. And it requires that those meetings be open for the public to attend. Meeting is defined very broadly in the OPMA and by the case law that that interprets the OPMA. A meeting under the OPMA occurs anytime when a quorum of the city council members meet and gather with a collective intent to transact the business of the governing body. The governing body, of course, is here, the city council, but it can also be your planning commission or what is your planning commission, its advisory boards, your civil service commission, and various committees of the governing body that would exercise actual or de facto decision-making authority on your behalf. It doesn't apply to all meetings. There are certain meetings that are actually outside of the OPMA. These are things like closed sessions for collective bargaining, quasi-judicial proceedings, proceedings concerning certain disciplinary or licensing issues. And then, of course, there's executive sessions, which do fall within the OPMA, but they are sort of exceptions to the OPMA that allow you to talk about a certain very narrowly-defined set of topics in a private portion of the meeting. And of course, all of your laws must be adopted in these open public meetings in order to be valid. The biggest risk, I think, for local government officials in Washington is that of the serial meeting. A serial meeting happens quite easily and by accident when a majority of the governing body have a series of smaller gatherings to discuss or communications. They don't even have to physically gather. I think that's part of the the part of this that's always tricky. But a series of communications where they discuss or, you know, collectively take action, and we'll get to the definition of action in a moment, which is why, which is part of the problem. It's very broad definition. But essentially, when when multiple groups of council members discuss city business, to the extent that in the end, a quorum of the council have had this discussion, maybe not together at the same time, but in a serial fashion. So, you know, Sally and Jeff talk about something, and then they tell, they bring in Bill, they discuss it with Bill, and then Bill goes home and he calls up Jeff and he talks about it with, tells Jeff what he talked about with the other two. Well, then you've had a serial meeting simply because four people have been involved in this, even if they weren't all talking about it at the same time. Happens most frequently in emails when folks start replying all and just having a conversation by email, but it also can happen by telephone, text, other ways, too. I will note that passive receipt of information is, does not constitute a serial meeting. So we talk about email. You can just forward informational messages on to folks, but it's always good to either put them in a BCC so they can't reply all, or even just note, please don't reply all, so that you don't get that. But passive receipt is is acceptable because, you know, once again, it it doesn't, there's no action there and there's no collective intent. And one of the more prominent cases on that is is this Egan versus City of Seattle case, which is fairly recent from 2020. And it involved a, it involved a piece of legislation. Yeah, it was the, it was a repeal of the business tax and the it was, it was clearly being talked about behind the scenes. There's still a question of fact whether or not there was a quorum of council members that discussed it, and ultimately, the opinion held that it was like an issue of material fact, which means it couldn't be decided on summary judgment, that there was a question of it for essentially for a jury to decide. But the the premise was that no one should really be talking about how they're going to vote or making any promises or commitments for how they're going to vote on legislation ahead of time, either in favor or against a piece of legislation. And the fact that looks, someone looking like, circumstances looking like people did that may be evidence that the body attended a meeting in violation of the OPMA. So it's kind of an important recent case. So like I said before, action is defined really broadly under the OPMA, which is part of what makes compliance sometimes a challenge. It means the transaction of the official business of a public agency, which is a very in and of itself, very broad, vague term. But it doesn't, includes, but it's not limited to receipt of public testimony, deliberations, discussions, considerations, review evaluations, and final actions. Well, final action is separately defined for other purposes in the OPMA as far as, you know, there's various, various things that have to be, final action has to be taken within a meeting, and there are certain things that require final action to be valid. So but the important thing to note here is that both action and final action can violate the OPMA. And I think that's a distinction that not everyone is aware of. So you don't actually have to formally vote to violate the OPMA. Oops, sorry for the dog barking. The test for an OPMA violation is pretty simple. Conduct constitutes an OPMA violation when a majority of the council meets, so quorum, with the collective intent to transact official business of the city or the agency. And during the meeting, the council members take action. So they talk about it essentially. They discuss, they deliberate, they consider. So you have to have this collective intent. You have to have people knowing that they're meeting. So there wouldn't be collective intent if one person were to secretly contact everyone and none of them, none of the rest of the council knew that they had that they were being contacted and that that, or that all the members of the council were being contacted. So that, you know, there has to be this collective intent. So someone's not going to get held liable if they had absolutely no idea that a council member was contacting all of their peers, including them. If they thought they were the only person that someone was talking to, there's no collective intent there. The penalties for OPMA violations are, they're kind of scary and they're they're a little strange. They're unusual. Well, first of all, the first one's not unusual. It makes sense. Your actions are null and void. So any action that you took on an item that was in violation of the OPMA would be nullified. So let's say that, you know, a contract was approved at a meeting that didn't comply with the OPMA, the contract is void. Same with an ordinance or anything like that. There are ways to rectify this. For instance, you can hold a proper meeting later and pass. If you, if you realize there might have been a mistake, you can then hold a proper meeting and pass the legislation, and then it will then be valid. It's not going to be nullified because previously it was improperly passed. But if you didn't do that, it would be nullified. There's a lot of cases, though, where the action is there's nothing, there would be nothing to nullify. It's just that folks talked about something. So it was inappropriate for them to to meet and discuss, but they there's, there's nothing for for the court to overturn. In those cases, what the court does is they issue penalties. A violation of the OPMA is a civil violation. It's each member of the governing body who attends the meeting with knowledge of the facts, sorry, is subject to personal liability in the form of a civil penalty, $500 for the first violation, and $1,000 for any subsequent violation. Because these are personal liabilities, generally, we advise that you should seek your own private counsel in these cases because city attorneys don't represent you personally. So these can get really expensive really fast. And they can also be used, the civil, the civil offenses can be used as grounds for And they can also be used, the civil, the civil offenses can be used as grounds for recall. So they're pretty serious. You don't see them a whole lot because, once again, the penalties are fairly low and in general, because all that one can really get is a nullification of the action. In the event that people just did something they weren't supposed to do and there's nothing to really nullify, there's not usually lawsuits over those, but they, you do have them. There are definitely watchdog groups that bring lawsuits and are watching everything that people do and will bring them just on principle. And they can because, well, there's attorney's fees provisions in the OPMA. And there are a lock cited attorney's fees provision. The prevailing party bringing a lawsuit gets attorney's fees if they prevail. However, the agency would only be entitled to attorney's fees if they can prove that the action was frivolous and advanced without reasonable cause. And that's a really high burden that is rarely met. You know, there are a few really frivolous litigious brassine litigators out there, but in general, a court is going to be pretty reluctant to find that, that a case was frivolous. And so in most cases, the city just ends up having to to pay its own fees even when it prevails in these cases. So they can be very closely. Now we will switch gears a little bit here before we jump back into talking about best OPMA practices overall to talk about the Open Government Trainings Act. This act was first passed, I think, in 2014, and it requires basic open government training for both elected officials and records officers of the agency. It covers public records and records retention and open public meetings. It has to be completed within 90 days of taking office, and then it has to be done within four, every four years after that. There's training available at multiple sources. I think that most folks on this council have done it through AWC before, but there's also a free training available, available from the Attorney General's Office. It's an online training. I, you know, I encourage everyone to take it. I mean, obviously, at least take it every, every four years, but you know, never hurts to take, to review it even more often if you, if you are so inclined. It's always good to be refreshed when it comes to these topics. Now for some best practices. So the OPMA is hard because it does, it's, it's a law that is, it has a great purpose and intent, transparency in government. However, like a lot of laws, it hasn't maybe caught up to advances in technology and expectations for how constituents want their elected officials to interact with them. So it definitely has, you know, it has some, there's some growing pains as we, as we wait and figure out, you know, how to, how to best move forward, you know, in these more digital times with the OPMA. But there are things that you can do to make, to make life easier, to still communicate with your fellow council members, to do your work as city council people, but while, you know, maintaining this transparency and compliance with the law. You can, of course, meet more frequently. That is not always a great solution. I know that everyone is busy and has lots of things to do in their personal lives, but you know, sometimes it makes a lot of sense to just throw a special meeting on the agenda to discuss something rather than trying to, you know, figure out how you're going to try to work an arrangement without violating the OPMA. Like it just might be, it just might be easier to do that than any of the other things that you, you know, could possibly think of. It just makes sometimes, when in doubt, just how, talk about it in the meeting. So if you need to have another meeting, just have another meeting. Another useful tool is to use staff or the city administrator as a resource to funnel information through or for collective decision-making. I'm not saying, you know, use this to make huge council decisions or to, you know, to even poll on your legislation or anything like that. You know, I'm not saying, you know, this is not a way to get around any laws or anything. But it is something that many agencies do do routinely and successfully to just make, to make a lot, to make business run smoothly. You know, for instance, topics for, you know, the retreat tonight or upcoming agenda items, things that you might want to move to a different agenda, those types of, that kind of input can be solicited by staff, filtered through staff, who can then review, you know, all the individual council members' input and then make decisions or recommendations to council leadership based on what they've seen. And that doesn't run afoul of the OPMA and it gets decisions made in an efficient manner. There are going to be situations where, you know, maybe council and administration don't see eye to eye on things and that, you know, that method won't work. But I'd say for nine times out of 10, that's a pretty successful method and it can, it's an easy way to avoid a violation and also get your business done in an efficient manner. And then, of course, you know, remember that if you've discussed something with, with two other members, you don't want to then discuss the same thing with a fourth. So you know, it's, it sounds kind of cheesy, but sometimes just keeping, jotting it down and keeping a log of who you've talked to is, is kind of useful. It just helps you keep it straight. And then you have something that you can, you know, refer to in the event you ever did get sued. It would be really, really easy for you to write a declaration at that point because you actually took notes of it. And that's a lot better than what most people have. And once again, like I said before, when in doubt, just discuss it in an open meeting. It's just the best solution. I envision someday maybe having like open government forums, you know, every city can have one where people can talk electronically and have a lot of these discussions. I think that would be really helpful. And I think that's really what folks expect at this point, but we haven't gotten there legally yet, at least. Always be careful with executive sessions. Don't overuse them. Stay on topic. Forgive your attorneys when they make you stay on topic. They're not trying to be mean. We're really just trying to help because the case law involving executive sessions really has been to narrow them significantly. There, it really, it's become very clear that they are to be narrowly construed and we are not given a whole lot of latitude within executive sessions. So we really do kind of have to stay on topic and not, there's not a whole lot of leeway within those topics. So if we, you know, try to move it along or shut things down, it's really just to protect everyone. And always make sure that you discuss matters when you come out in an executive session before you vote. I, you know, we will all know that people were not voting in the executive session. We will know that maybe everyone's just really tired and, you know, heard what they heard and they know how they want to vote on a potential settlement agreement or whatnot. But unless people make some comments, it tends to make other, maybe audience members might question what went on. Because there's, because there's just, anytime there's a void of information, people will fill the void with, you know, their own ideas of what went on. So it's always good to just make sure that you say why you're doing what you're doing publicly so that nobody else tries to infer what, what that is for you. And then, of course, don't ever discuss what was discussed in an executive session because that would violate the law and it's actually grounds for forfeiture of office. There are a few other situations that don't necessarily fall within, you know, the OPMA and violating the OPMA, but that I think are just things to be careful of and aware of. Text messages come up for me a lot and I generally advise to avoid text messaging during council meetings. Obviously, everyone's adults and you have lives and a lot of folks are parents or whatnot and have businesses. You may have to have your phone and you may have to look at it and text from time to time, and that's understandable. You know, it's, we can't, we can't necessarily just ignore it for, for a three-hour meeting. But every time you pick up your phone and look at it during a meeting, the public does wonder what you're doing. And you can violate the OPMA by texting with council members, even during a meeting, if you're texting with a quorum of them, or if you're texting with less than a quorum, but then you text with, you know, more of them the next day or something like that and becomes a serial meeting. But more than, more importantly, even if you're not, even if you're just talking to one other member of the council, even if you're just talking to your, your neighbor at home, people will wonder what you're doing. They, it just looks like you're not paying attention. And it, it really has this, this appearance of impropriety that makes people, it just makes people suspicious. And then you'll, you know, suddenly you'll get a public records request and they want, you know, the records from you during that meeting or whatnot, which, you know, those would be public records and you'd have to, you know, have to give them over in a public records request. So it can be, can be a real, can be a real pain then to, then to have to, you know, deal with the repercussions of having done that. So I just, it's just something I think is generally best avoided. And then also be careful when you are on social media. Social media is a weird nebulous gray area for the OPMA because there haven't been a lot of cases with the OPMA. There's been some, some PRA cases, but it is pretty, we all kind of agree in the legal community that you probably can violate the OPMA through social media if you're having, you know, if you're collectively discussing city business with other council members in online forums. It becomes a little bit more questionable, you know, do you have to be talking with the particular council members or just responding to and from the constituents? There really, we don't really have any guidance from the courts yet, so it's kind of gray. So it's just one of those areas where I say, be really careful with how you interact with people on social media and try to stay in your personal persona as much as possible and not put on your council member hat. Now I'll go through some examples. This is the fun stuff. All right, travel. So let's say that the NLC Congressional City Conference is coming up and five of the council plan on attending. They're all booked on the same airplane and they also want to carpool to the airport together. Is this going to be an issue? No, that is not going to be an issue as long as they don't talk shop. The OPMA expressly provides that it's not a violation for the majority of members of the governing body to travel or gather for social purposes or for purposes other than the meeting. So to the extent you all see each other at salmon days, that's fine. Just don't start talking about, you know, a city infrastructure project while you're there. Just keep it to, you know, to keep it to the, the personal, keep it to the social and you'll be fine. Texting. During a council meeting, a council member has an idea that might help move a contentious issue forward. Instead of bringing it up to the entire group, they text a fellow council member during the meeting to run it by them first. I made up this, this example because it reminded me of something that I would do personally or would want to do. So just FYI, was not picking on this group at all. This was, was a personal, personal desire story. Was this an OPMA violation? No, because at this time, if you're just texting one other member of the group, that's not a quorum. But once again, like we talked about a few slides ago, I advise against it because holding private conversations just tends to invite public scrutiny and thus lawsuits. And once again, remember that all your text messages are subject to public disclosure and also records retention laws, which means that you have to keep them in accordance with the local government records retention schedule, which really doesn't allow you to delete anything other than transitory messages. Those are things like, I'm running late or see you tomorrow, you know, really, really basic stuff. All right, this one will kind of explore the whole concept of collective intent to meet. Council leadership is working to plan the next retreat. Before creating the proposed agenda, they want to get a general sense of what issues are currently on their fellow council members' minds. Can they call all individual council members to solicit feedback like this? Probably. Provided they do so carefully and don't have collective intent to meet and transact city business. This means that they need to stay in listening mode only because the mere passive receipt of information is in itself not a violation of the OPMA. They also need to keep it high level and open-ended. So I'm calling to touch base with you and see what you, what you think the biggest issues facing the city are. You don't want to drill down into the specific business items or issues. The closer you get into those, the more you get into transacting the business. It just gets, it gets a little bit dicier, I think, the more specific things get. You don't want to engage in a discussion or exchange opinions and ideas. That becomes more deliberative discussion, you know, then you're really starting, you really definitely are meeting the, you're meeting the definition of action there. And you definitely don't want to discuss what was said and who was, who said what with anyone else on the council because then you get into the collective intent to meet. If everyone knows what's going on, then there is that collective intent to meet. So instead, you want to just learn from those calls to inform your own opinion so that you can then make your own suggestions and decisions based on what you have gathered, the information that you've gathered personally. Once again, it's always great to use the city administrator to share information and help make these decisions when it's appropriate. And when in doubt, discuss it in a public meeting, even if you have to have an extra one. Email. A council member receives an email from a resident with a great idea for a city wellness program. They immediately forward it to everyone else in the council so they can look at it too as a meeting occurred. No, at this point, they've just passed it on as an FYI. So it's passive receipt. However, if people started to reply and discuss it, then you would have a serial meeting by way of email. Polling. This picture is directly from that Seattle case I mentioned earlier. A council member has an idea for legislation that could help solve a somewhat controversial issue, but they don't want to open what could be a real can of worms if other council members have no interest in pursuing it. Can they call all individual council members to gauge their interest in this potential solution before they, you know, bring it forward? Probably not. Polling other council members is specifically prohibited in the OPMA. They call that one out specifically. Asking about a particular subject or business item rather than seeking passive receipt of general information probably falls under the definition of action. And then if you have a quorum that are doing this, they're collectively committing, you know, they may be collectively committing to vote a particular way, then they are definitely taking action and violation of the OPMA. So you don't, they know that this is going on and they're saying what is, you know, what they think, then, you know, you really have a problem, but just, if they know that this is going on and they're saying what is, you know, what they think, then, you know, you really have a problem, but even without that, you're, you're skirting the line close enough that I don't think it's a good idea. It's best to steer clear conversations about specific business items if you're going to talk to more than two other people. Just kind of keep it general and high level. Because for better or worse, the OPMA just requires everyone to have really uncomfortable conversations publicly. Um, better or worse, that's, that's just kind of its, its thing. Groups of threes. So following the city council meeting, it's clear that three council members share similar opinions on an issue. Can the three of them meet privately to discuss? Yes, absolutely. It happens all the time. But, you know, you just have to keep in mind, this is why I suggest my logbook, because, um, if one of them then communicates with the fourth member and says, oh yeah, this is what we've been talking about, um, then you start to get into serial meeting territory. Uh, you know, there'd be a question of whether it was if those other three, you know, members didn't know, but it starts to get dicey enough where I don't think you want to go there. So better not to get that fourth person involved. And you can always just tell people, I'm sorry, you know, I already talked about that with a couple of people. Don't want to, I don't want to blow the OPMA. I mean, and everyone will understand because they don't, they don't want to do the, they don't want to do it either. Rotating council members. So council would like to invite one council member to join their weekly leadership team meetings. To keep things fair, they want to invite a different member each week. Will this create a risk of an OPMA violation? Probably, unfortunately. At least if you ever want to discuss the same things with the different rotating council members. This would essentially be the same thing as your group of three scenario before, but done serially. You would have, um, you would have these three people talk about these things, you know, one week and then one person would come, be swapped out, fourth person would come in. And if they were then just discussing the same things, you potentially have, um, have a serial, serial meeting situation going on there. So I don't know, it's, it's, it's less, it's less sticky if these meetings are open to the public, but it's still kind of an uncomfortable gray area that I would probably recommend against getting into.
Hey Rachel, quick question. Deputy Council President Hall here. Um, with that item in particular, is that really, does that really just apply if discussions at these meetings, um, are about the transaction of city business? Um, so if it's more just about, you know, like, I guess using us as an example, planning and interviewing the calendar and ensuring things are lining up um, right for agendas, is that something, I mean, should we still be cautious when we have those kinds of meetings too?
I would still be cautious about those just because I guess, I mean, technically that is agency business. I think it's less likely you would have overlap though with those because unless you're talking about the same agendas and agenda items, less, less chance of overlap, but still potentially could be. But definitely less so. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, thanks. Very gray.
I know, it's very, it's unfortunately gray. It's, it's very frustrating. Oh, social media. Like, like I said, this one is, this one's a real beast and I'll be, I'm certain a court case will be forthcoming in the future. I'm surprised there isn't one yet. A robust discussion has erupted on Nextdoor about the city's response to a recent snow event. It's clear that the residents may not have all the facts about why this city responded as it did. Attempting to help four council members respond in the comments to clarify um, with information that they have from their roles as council members. Is there an OPMA violation? It's gray, but it's dangerous. If the, if a quorum of the council are responding to residents and making comments about agency business in the same online forum, it may be considered action under the OPMA. It would really be fact-specific because you'd have to have that collective intent to meet. So it would come down to whether or not the council members knew that each other were participating on, in that conversation. Uh, that, that just gets, that's just hard because then that becomes an issue of fact for a jury and that's just not somewhere you want to go necessarily. I mean, it's, that's just, you know, it's just, it's become so, who they, who do they believe? I mean, it's, it's, you yes, maybe you didn't look through the whole comment string, but maybe, no, it just depends on who, who they believe. If they believe that that's plausible, that you had no idea these other council members were weighing in too, um, when their names were right there. It, it's just, that is, I'd be really careful, you know, certainly if you're going to weigh in, go, look through the string and make sure you're the only, you know, one, or there's only one other person before you say it. Or do what, uh, I would suggest next, which is communicate privately with your constituents because there is case law establishing that communications between their uh, constituents, like broader members of the public are, do not trigger serial meetings concerns. So you can send those private messages to folks explaining what went, went on with the snow and why the plow routes are the way they are, and there's no issue whatsoever. Um, but just be careful when you're commenting in those forums. This, this one comes up for me a lot and you know, it's, it's gray, but it's, it's a, it's an area where I would not be surprised at all if the court says, yes, that's a meeting. All right, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Um, I see Councilmember Mars has a question. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I have a question about social media posting on city issues. Um, it seems like the local municipals are all over the place. There are municipals who have an extremely active social media presence where they talk about everything and anything, uh, including issues that, uh, are going to come up in council. And, uh, your, your, your example there doesn't exactly cover it, but I actually always thought the issue wasn't that, the, the issue, I thought there was an OPMA element that said that basically you can't have a, I thought there was a, 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 there was something that had to do with, you can't have a conversation but exclude some members of the community. So if you post publicly in social media, you're okay, but if you, if you create like a subgroup and you say, I'm going to have a group of, you know, Tola's, Tola's army and Tola's army, I'm going to have all sorts of opinions about city politics, but not share it with the public, that that can act, that's actually its own kind of trouble. So can you talk generally about this, this, this thing that we've seen particularly in the last 10 years? Where some municipals are, are like vehemently, you know, acti-, you know, activistly, uh, uh, posting to social media about municipal issues. Thanks.
Yes, I can. Yes. Well, you're, you're right. You can't, I think, I think where that's coming from, what you're, what you're saying about, you, you, you can't, you cannot have an open public meeting that excludes any members of the public. So you couldn't have like a, a meeting on Facebook Live or something because it, not everyone is on, has access to that. So you could not actually have a meeting there. But that doesn't mean that council members cannot, you know, have, be active on social media as long as they're not conducting meetings pursuant to the OPMA. And you're right. Some, some, um, electeds are very active on social media. They normally will open up their own, of, like an official Facebook account, or I'm sure that all the, all the various social media uh, companies have their like official versions, but it's, it's a separate, it's, it's linked to your personal one, but you actually can, you know, put in your specific like city contact information and it's, it is separate and it's very nice because then that is something that you can kind of give access to the city to, to then draw from in the event that you have to pull that stuff for public records because that has become a, a much more common thing, uh, records requests for social media activity. I see those every few months at least, and it's really a nuisance for the folks who have been using their personal accounts to post about some of their council member stuff. First of all, we have to, I have to meet with them and we have to sit and we have to decide, were you talking as a resident or were you talking as a council member? It's a lot easier if they make that decision before they post and they decide that before they log in and which count they're going to use and how they're going to, you know, they decide that, how they're going to do it that way. Um, and then it's just, you know, it's, it's weird. I mean, I, you know, I had a one case where there were clearly comments that were, it, it was obviously s- city business and she knew it and we, she was really, really a trooper about releasing it, but then there were other comments that we had to give that, because they were in the screen grab that were from like friends that, you know, just, it was, just seemed weird to have to invasive, to have to give over that information too. So just for your own protection and privacy, I would say if you're going to be doing stuff on social media, uh, and, and speaking in your council member voice, then I would get one of those dedicated accounts and use that because it's, just makes it so much cleaner. It makes it easier for the records perspective and it just makes it easier for you to know later what, who, who was I talking as? Was I, was I talking in my personal capacity or as a council member? It's much easier.
Thank you. That's super helpful. Agreed. Very helpful. Uh, any other questions for the city attorney? Otherwise, thank you very much for the refresher and, uh, council members will, I assume, reach out to you or, uh, the clerks individually as we need our for your OPMA training.
Yes, we're going to implement a system where the clerk will, um, keep track of who needs it too, so that we can be a fail-safe for you and provide reminders because I think you guys have more important things to worry about. So we'll help you out with that regard.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, council, oh, never mind. Uh, all right then. I think that's, I think that's that. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks for having me.
All right. Uh, with that though, really the, um, second to last thing on our agenda is guiding principles and expectations follow-up. I just r- right off the bat, I'm going to say there is no expectation from Council President Walsh and I that we need to have any conversation about this at all, if you want. Um, where we, where we ended up last week was, um, people would take the week and if they thunk up any next steps or additional feedback on, you know, what you'd like to do with the guiding principles um, and expectations, whether that be maybe a more formal adoption to our rules of procedures or something like that, that this would be the forum to, uh, provide that feedback and then we could take that with us. Otherwise, our current feedback is, um, that Council President Walsh and I will summarize what's currently there and just get it out to the council. Um, so that way everyone has that, um, with them and they can keep it prominently on their computer or something like that, but it's, there's no formal action. Um, so this is just an opportunity if you had any other ideas to share. So I will wait maybe 10 seconds. Oh, uh, yeah, Councilmember James Shaw, go ahead.
I have no other ideas to share, so let's make that clear right up front. I've long been a fan of the Sound Cities Association uh, statements. I think that they are really well-stated and very clear and uh, if we can stick with those, we, we are doing a good job. So, uh, I'm just fine with that as a um, something that I can look at and, uh, reassure myself that I'm either doing or not doing the right job. So I think those are perfectly fine.
All right, we'll be sure to include the SCA principles when we send out kind of a summary from that meeting as well. So it's easily accessible. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe here. Um, I, I think the SCA principles are, are solid and I think that we should try to abide by them whenever we can. I was wondering if it'd be possible to, uh, get a little, um, you know, note card with all the principles on it that we could carry around with us. Um, I find that I would just tuck it into my bag and have it with me, you know, when I come to council meetings or when I go to other, other meetings and then I could refer to it if I were, thought I was, you know, bearing too far, uh, from the principles. Um, and it's just an easy way for us to review it really easily when we need to and, and it's an easy reference for us. So if the, if it wouldn't be too much trouble for the administration to perhaps take those, uh, principles, put them onto a little, you know, note card and then just, um, you know, put it into uh, plastic and, and something solid there that we could keep with us. That might be a suggestion so that we could adhere to the rules as we go through our daily business.
I think that's a great suggestion. I see Deputy City Administrator Snyder turned on the camera. Did you want to talk about the note card?
Just to say, uh, thank you for that suggestion and certainly we can do that.
Thank you. Uh, oh, and, uh, Councilmember Ray, you're up.
Oh, thank you Deputy Council President Hall. Uh, Chris Ray. Um, I think this is really a good idea. I think they're good guidelines. I wouldn't, I would not necessarily want them to be memorialized and codified in the rules of procedure. Um, the only problem I have with the, uh, SCA guidelines, which I think are generally really great and super great for a non-governing board body, but given the OPMA training we just went through, the second thing in the, uh, SCA guidelines of no surprises, may be hard to do at times because I may have a point of view that, uh, I can't discuss with everybody or you may have a point of view that you can't discuss with everybody. So I don't know that we can commit to no surprises. I think that's, uh, just, uh, you know, kind of the nature of the beast. Um, but other than that, I think it's a great idea.
All right. Any other feedback or commentary on guiding principles and expectations? And we'll work with the administration on these note cards. Good idea. All right then. With that, uh, we'll conclude, um, discussion on that and move into our final public comment opportunity for the evening. Uh, city clerk, could we confirm whether or not, um, that if there's anyone who has indicated, um, a desire to speak in advance? Um, and while we do that, just a reminder to anyone who might be on the call right now, um, to raise your virtual hand if you have, um, any interest in providing public comments tonight.
Deputy Council President, uh, nobody has signed up previously to speak and there are no members of the public in attendance at the meeting any longer.
Okay. Well then that wraps that up. Uh, just again, as a reminder then, um, that written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isapowa.gov. All right. That wraps up our meeting. Thank you very much for a great, um, couple of discussions. Appreciate it. Um, next item on the agenda is adjournment, so we will adjourn this meeting at eight thirty-nine PM. Have a great rest of your evening, folks.